It is six thirty, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Review and approve council agenda. Any additions or anything?
Move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items, item A, approve nine twenty-three nineteen council meeting minutes. Item B, approve ten seven nineteen council meeting minutes, and item C, approve resolution, resolution designating polling places for twenty twenty elections.
I pull C. Second.
Anybody want to move to approve A and B?
So move.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Mike?
I have got some questions on precinct locations and descriptions of boundaries for these precincts. They're kind of very generic, um, kind of confusing. And especially precinct number three, the part of the city lying south of Division Street, west and east boundary. Holy God, that leaves the whole south side of White Park open.
It gives the address, Mike.
Huh?
It gives the address.
It gives the address of the polling place, yes, but it doesn't give the address and the boundaries of that area that that precinct covers. Precinct two, Crow Review Education Center, part of the city lying south of Division again, east of Seventeenth Avenue and north of Heritage. There's two of these precincts, two and three. If you read it, fall in the same area. Let's see. Precinct four, the part of the city lying in the west portion of the city, including east and north of High ninety-four and south of Sock River. I, I truly think in even precinct one, the part of the city lying north of Division Street. Is that from Wayda Avenue to Sock River? So that would be all of precinct one?
Do you want a more descriptive, because this is what we've had for, written for.
Well, I, I do believe it probably should be a little bit more district, this, uh, especially two and three.
And I think we actually got these from S C H, so we'll have to work out.
Well, truthfully, I mean, either that or show a block map of where the precincts lie, because it would be very, if I just came to this town and said, I want to vote, and I live on the south end, I've got a choice between two places.
Two, two ways that you're able to figure this out. Number one, you can go onto the Secretary of State's website and determine that by putting your address in as to where you need to vote, number one, that's where most people go. Two, there is a precinct map, is that on our website, Carla? That, that depicts those areas as to where they're located on that, so there's, there's locations of where they're at. Where they can determine what those, where those locations are. So there are, it's not as if they can't find it, um, and determine where they're, where they're going.
Computer illiterate like myself.
We can try to get them more descriptive and see what we can do.
I, I think.
When do you need this done?
That would be a little bit.
By December first, so.
We have another meeting between them?
We're having one on the eighteenth.
Okay. Well, I think this should be changed and be a little bit more specific to the areas as to where the precincts lie.
I got an idea. You, you say precinct one, precinct two, precinct three, precinct four, look at, look at map.
See, yeah, or we could attach a map to it, really, say, see attached map.
See attached map.
You could actually approve this and just ask to have the voting precinct map attached so that it doesn't have to come back.
Right.
That would be a good idea.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passed four to one. Regular agenda items, item A, preliminary and final plat wilderness edition.
Just one moment, now that I, I was on that other one, I gotta get myself. This is what happens when John is gone, rely on other help to help him out. Um, what you have before you is the, um, preliminary and final plat review of wilderness edition. It's a three lot plat. Each of them exceed the minimum ten acre lot with frontage requirements. That are, that meet our requirements for that. It's in the A-one agriculture rural district zone. And one of the things that the county's gonna make, uh, the individuals do is, um, share a, a road. Share driveway for those three locations, it doesn't want to, they don't want to have, um, separate locations, um, road applications, or excuse me. Right away onto the road for access.
Can we throw the map up on?
Yep, I'm getting there. So you can see right there where it is, it's just off of one thirty-seven, just south of Bel- Belclaire Acres. And just a little bit north of Mud Lake. The two applicants are in the room here if you want to talk to them. It, it is a fairly straightforward plat. There is, um, parkland dedication fees, uh, that are associated with that, and, um, those are set up by our fee schedule. And our eight hundred and thirty-six dollars per lot for a single family residential, so the total would be just over twenty-five hundred dollars total for that. Uh, this item did go forward, um, to the planning commission, um, for the public hearing, it was held on October eighth. There were no concerns, um, related to that at all. And so staff is supportive of, uh, both approving the, the preliminary and the final plat as submitted. There is some recommendations, uh, that go along with that. Um, one, development upon the property may be subject to a development agreement with the city. All private facilities such as signs, entrance medians, fencing trees, et cetera, shall be placed and constructed outside the permanent county right of way. A shared access shall be utilized for all three lots. An approach permit will be required for, from the Stearns County Highway Department prior to constructing this approach. No additional accesses will be permitted per Stearns County Highway Department. The owner confers all right, rights of access to Stearns County for the property frontage along and adjacent to the county right of way upon the recording of the road certificate with the final plat. A utility permit shall be obtained from the Stearns County if utility construction activities are within the county right of way. All street and private entrances should be graded in such a manner as to not drain onto existing county roadways. Mailbox, uh, supports installed within the county right of way shall conform with the latest Stearns County mailbox support policy. And then a payment in lieu of parkland dedication shall be made to the city of White Park in the amount of, uh, twenty-five hundred, um, and eight dollars prior to affixing this city's signatures upon the final plat. One other thing I just want to mention, um, that it was reviewed, um, that, uh, department heads did review this and determined that, uh, due to the distance from city utilities, that the parcels may develop without city utility connections. Um, and may instead utilize onsite while in septic, subject to the Stearns County requirements, and that, um, if and when city utilities are extended to or past this area, the owners will be required to abandon onsite systems and connections and hook up to city water and sewer within one year after those have been, um, made yet brought forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, again, the applicants are here as well.
Counsel, any questions?
My question, looking at this is, um, we have that solar farm. I believe it abuts your property, is that right?
It's about three or four blocks north.
By Belclaire Acres on that side over there?
Three or four blocks north.
Four blocks north of there.
It's away from it.
North of there, so it's away from you, so there, there's no problem with that, uh, interfering with any of the. Okay, um. Your facilities, are we gonna allow them to put maybe a joint well and septic system in?
That's all subject to Stearns County's environmental health, or the, the health, county health department, I believe, gets involved in, in that, and so they're the ones that will determine how those wells and septics need to be completed. Yep.
So that, that's just gotta go through the county?
It does.
Anything else?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second with the, um, parkland fees and the conditions.
The recommendations.
Yeah.
I'd second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. You got it.
Very good, thanks.
All right, you bet. Item B, assessments of unpaid city charges, uh, they've been changed a little bit, you should have a copy of these in front of you, there was a, oh, just me? Oh, yeah, there was one, two, three, four, there was five of them. Four of those have now been paid. So please note, take notice that the White Park City Council will hold a public hearing on the fourth day of November two thousand and nineteen at six thirty P M or soon thereafter at the White Park City Hall located at nineteen thirteenth Avenue North, White Park, Minnesota, to consider the assessment of unpaid city charges pursuant to Minnesota statute four-two-nine dot zero-one-one to four-two-nine dot one-one-one. The property proposed to be assessed for such improvements, improvement is as follows, its lot is parcel number ninety-eight dot six-one-zero-two-one dot zero-zero-one-zero. Everybody knows where that is. The address is two thirty-six, Eleventh Avenue North in White Park. And the unpaid assessment of that is two hundred and four, the estimated assessment is two hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents. That was dated at the fifteenth day of October twenty nineteen, it is, uh, six forty-one, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here to speak at that public hearing?
Pass a minute.
Go by.
That's just, uh, for the removal of snow charges only. That we had charged, or someone had done and, and charged to us for the charges of that.
When they don't do their snow removal, then we have it.
We do it and charge it to them.
We charged it back to them.
When it's six forty-three, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, and a motion to, uh, approve?
So move.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item C, consider facility event coordinator position.
Uh, what you have before you, um, is a job description for, um, a new position, um, that would, be the, the facility and events coordinator for the city, uh, one of the primary responsibilities of that position would be to, to manage, um, the operations, um, with, of the ledge, um, the position would also have some responsibilities for any other facilities that we have or other events within the city where they would be able to coordinate, uh, that. We did review the job description at the work session, um, prior to this meeting. Based on that job description, um, we send all our job descriptions off to Baker Tilly, which is, was formerly Springstead, to determine where they fit within our, pay grade system. Um, the recommendation pay grade is an eight with a salary range between fifty-nine thousand to seventy-six thousand. Uh, the action before you this evening, uh, would be one, to approve the actual job description, and then two, to actually look at beginning the hiring process. Ideally, we would like to have this person in place in January, um, so that can start working with, um, coordinating some of the events for the amphitheater and other, other such things, so, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have related to the position or the process, um, and I'll open it up for.
Well, I, I thought we had talked in the meeting that we didn't want the bachelor's degree, um, and looking at the other job descriptions we have, I think those descriptions require more education than what this does. And they're very much less restrictive on the education and experience portion. I believe that education and experience should read basically the same as the other two positions we're going to consider tonight. And that should read.
High school diploma or G E D.
Yeah.
What it, what?
Okay, yep, um, high school diploma or G T E with coursework in, uh, a financial and business background. Would be a great improvement to that application, and it would water, uh, widen the horizon for people that would want to apply for that position instead of restrict it to someone that has a bachelor's degree plus five to seven years of experience. And or five or seven years of experience, so I think that should be changed in this, and I believe we talked about that in the work session when we were talking about this, so, um.
I.
We did not talk about that for this position. An A A degree is certainly a minimal degree, um, for this particular, we need somebody who's high functioning and to be able to make decisions.
The way that.
I, we need someone that needs to be able to make decisions, work with people, and be able to sort the skills. A B A degree does not give you that. If we get someone right out of school, he'd have no idea what the.
So the way that the language, if I could just point out.
I believe we should make it the same as our other ones. That way we're more consistent on what we require for our positions. Our other positions don't require people with B As, especially when you're going into finance and, the workable pe- pe- of the city, I mean, it, it's.
I might, I'd like to just point out, first of all, it, it says associate's degree in business or facility venue management or other related field, um, or at least fi- three to five years of experience in that, so that's what's required, is that you have to have at least three to five years of experience if you don't have the associate's degree. Preferred
Yes.
would be a bachelor's degree or five to seven years of experience in one of the other related fields in business, facility venue management or event planning. So it doesn't require that you have to have a bachelor's degree, it doesn't require that you have to have an associate's degree. If you don't have an associate's degree, then we would be looking for somebody with three to five years of experience doing this thing. You're at a level of a position which is much higher, i- it's higher than the other ones, and there's a lot of responsibility that goes along with that. I believe that you need to have at least somebody with three to five years of experience doing it. Preferred would be somebody with five to seven years' experience or a bachelor's degree in one of those areas, so it's not required, the education on either one of them, which is what I got the impression was that you wanted to take the ability to have either the education or the experience, and I agree with that. And so it, maybe it doesn't read exactly the way, but the intention of that is, is that you either, you have to have the associate's degree, or if you don't have that, you can have three to five years of experience.
And we did change it because I've got the, I got the old one in front of me, and it was changed for experience, and it doesn't say, this does not say experience, three to five years' experience in, in venue or, or facility management, it says in business, so it could be a business major too.
But it does say it too.
Huh?
Facility and venue.
It says or.
No, it says here.
It says three to five years of experience in business, facility, comma, slash, venue management or event planning.
In business, comma, comma.
Yeah.
So, so it could be a business person that's.
Right.
Could be any of those.
That comes in. That's a manager. What's good, got a new job? All right, anything else on that?
I just think it's too restrictive and it should, should read back to just using.
Does everybody think of weighted okay?
I think it looks okay now.
Does it look, the salary high?
Well, that's not up to us. We can't do anything about the salaries.
I know. But how you write your job description is how that gets weighted.
That's true, but I don't, I don't know how else you write the job description, I guess.
That's why we talked about the job description prior to it going and getting weighted. That's why.
I don't like it anyway, so.
Well, I understand that.
No, and I think you're right.
And I think it's inclusive enough.
When, when you're assigning that high of a level, we're paying some good money, I want a good qualified person to do this.
Yeah.
You know, and I, I, I don't think this is really that restrictive, because this is a higher level position.
So city finance or any of that is not a high level position?
Finance director is a higher position than this.
Yeah.
We're talking about an account, if you're referring it to as.
For a finance director then is a high school diploma or G E with some experience.
No, no, that's not true.
Not the finance officer, that's an accountable, that's a clerk.
That's accounts payable, receivable clerk.
Oh, let me.
We're not hiring a finance director.
Right here it is.
We are not.
Not hiring a finance director, we're hiring a clerk. Accounts payable, receivable clerk.
Counsel, your wishes?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve creating a facilities event coordinator position and a job description as presented. And also approve beginning the hiring process for the facilities events coordinator position.
I'll second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Three to two, it passes.
I'm voting no because I don't think it was inclusive enough.
Okay. Item D, consider accounts payable, account receivable position, that's the next one.
Um, so this position is being created by a vacancy that will be, um, for the payroll H R clerk position. As, as you're all aware, because we did approve it, um, we're underneath, we're, we're working on our, um, compensation plan uh, that we do every five years. This was one of the positions that was being reviewed. And so what you have before you is the revised job description. That job description, um, prior to this was in a pay grade five. It's being recommended to be moved to a pay grade six, and the reason is, is because.
Pay grade six or four?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going, you're talking about the accounts, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm one ahead of me, there's too many of these, I apologize.
This is accounts payable.
All right. The accounts payable and receivable is a new position, um, that, um, with our finance director moving into a phased retirement this year, this is one of the first steps that we're wanting to, to take, uh, and create this position. This, uh, job description is attached for your review and consideration. What I am recommending is that, um, it is going to be a, uh, position underneath our civil service board. And I would like to, with a civil service board process, we can choose to do the internal process first and then open it externally. You can choose to do the internal, external together, and in this case, there is some interest in this one. Internally, I'd like to have the internal process go first, prior to being it opened externally. And so the action before you is one, to approve the, the job description for this position, and then also to authorize beginning the hiring process.
What's the salary range on this?
The salary range for this one is, hold on. It is a pay grade four.
And what was our previous pay grade?
This was a new position.
This is a new position.
It's, um, forty-three, five forty to fifty-six, three thirty-eight. And after the first of the year, that changes, so that's what's in place today, yep.
Our pay grade for our.
Pay grade four.
Our event coordinator position was what?
Was a pay grade eight, five fifty-nine thousand is bottom, forty-three for this one, top seventy-six, top fifty-six.
And this position is only forty-three to?
Fifty-six.
Yes. And that's based off of the job descriptions.
And again, those are based off of those, we have nothing to do with those points.
Nope.
Absolutely nothing. We cannot deviate from those points.
That's part of what ends up happening with pay equity, if you don't stay within that. We create the job description and what the duties are, we turn it over then to, uh, and we use, we've used Springstead or Baker Tilly now, and they, they enter it into their system and they give us the point, so that's based off of keeping internal and external equity, so.
Counsel, any other?
I'm gonna move to approve the accounts payable, receivable clerk position.
I'll second that.
How about the hiring process?
Well, you wanted them separate, I thought.
Oh, she didn't say that.
Not separate.
Can I do both?
You can do them both.
You can do them both.
Well, in the hiring process, internal.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Next one, consider payroll H R position.
Okay, now I can get to where I started, I apologize before. Um, as I mentioned before, this position is, um, being created by a vacancy, um, of our payroll human resources clerk. She will be done with her, um, in her position, uh, the end of November, um, pursuing a different career altogether. And so as I mentioned, that this is a job description that was being reviewed, um, prior, um, as part of our compensation plan study. Um, and based off of that review of that job description, it is being recommended to be moved from a pay grade five to a pay grade six, and it has a lot to do with the level of responsibility and the knowledge required of federal, state, and local laws, um, both with payroll and benefits. And so to get, I'll give you the salary range for a six. Hold on just a second. Is fifty thousand five eighty-three to sixty-five thousand four fifty-two.
All right, counsel, you got any questions on this one?
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item F, consider operator agreement for the ledge amphitheater.
Uh, what you have before you is the, um, operator agreement, um, for, uh, between the city of White Park and Mammoth Presentations and, um, excuse me, New West Presentations and Mammoth. This would be for, um, handling, um, a lot of our national acts, um, out at the, well, all of the national acts out at the, out at the, the ledge. Um, and so the agreement is before you, um, tonight. Be happy to answer any questions. Essentially, what the agreement is going to do is it makes, um, the operators responsible for all of the expenses and allows them to also collect all of the revenues, um, for, of which they, they make off of that, and then they pay a fee back to the city of White Park, um, for the use of the facility. That's in about the simplest of terms. The one, um, change that, um, uh, New West and Mammoth's attorney had asked is that the liquor license would actually be held in the hands of the concessionaire, which is somebody that they would be holding, or they will be contracting with. And so we wanted to just, they wanted to make sure that they had that designated correctly, that it was going to be with that. Um, this agreement needs to be approved, um, by resolution. And that resolution is also included for your review and consideration.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions, I'm just trying to get to them here. Under, um, section three point four point one, uh, C.
Hold on just a second, Vic, I gotta get to, back to the, sorry.
Three point four, point one, sub C. Fourteen? Page fourteen.
Three point one.
Letters C at the top of fourteen.
Huh?
Letters C.
At the top of page fourteen.
Okay.
Well, my, my question is the operator, it says here, the operator, uh, the recast the city operator, operate and produce local events at the amphitheater, I thought that was something we were gonna take care of.
We are, but if there is ever an opportu- if there's something that comes up that we want their assistance for, then it gives us the ability to utilize them if we want to, we don't have to.
No, that doesn't, that doesn't restrict our ability to use it, okay.
Yep.
Also under, uh, four point one point A, which is top of page sixteen. I'm trying to understand where we become responsible for providing, uh, police and fire protection, traffic control.
For.
Is that for all events or just for our events?
For our general, the city shall be responsible for the owner's expenses and for supplies, supplied by the city to the same extent on the same terms where the city provides services to the general public. So if, if there was ever an event out there, they're gonna have to handle all of their special protection, those kinds of things, but if there was a general event, we're gonna be responsible for handling our expenses.
I just wanted to make sure that was not the national event, they're responsible.
No, but if there was a national event that had some major catastrophe, we would have the same response that we would for any other event that would happen in town, we would be responsible for those costs.
No, I've, I had some question about four too, but it's, it's, it's resolved, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'd move to, to accept.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item G, consider. Opposed? Passed unanimously. Item G, consider the ledge logo.
I would like to.
Hold on, Carla's got it up there so we can at least make sure that we're. There we go.
There we go.
I numbered those, so.
Like to make a motion to approve number two.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yep.
No.
How'd you vote, Ken?
Yes.
Four? Three to two in favor.
I was no.
Frank and Mike.
Don't like it.
No, Frank and Vic.
Oh, Frank and Vic. I should've known better than Mike. It was Mike. Jesus, Mike. Three to two.
I was the one that made the ding motion.
Yeah, that doesn't mean you're gonna, that doesn't mean you're gonna vote for it. I've seen that already.
Yeah, that's true. I've done it. I've made a motion just to turn it down.
Yeah, you bet. Alright, approve bills.
Questions on the bills? There was a pretty large one to Erickson Electric for safety upgrades. Is that something that was required in our lift stations? That was over twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Arc flash. Had to deal with all the arc flash.
Did we have that money in the budget, or where did that come from?
Safety.
Is there a special line item for that, or what?
Yeah.
Okay. And I got my Gillicks one answered already. The quarry power fountain, or it, it says quarry power for the fountain. We didn't even talk about that, and I was surprised to see the fountain in the quarry. And now we're paying Erickson again a thousand sixty-one dollars for putting power there. When we didn't talk about if we should put a fountain in.
It's for aerating that small quarry is what he purchased that for, because it's got so much, there's so much stagnant pieces. That's what it was for.
Well, that's weird, because it's been sitting there the same hundred years, not being aerated, and now it needs to be aerated and.
For looks.
For the looks of the quarry.
Otherwise it was green.
Well, I wish we would've talked about putting a fountain in if we were going to, because we casually mentioned it.
Yeah.
And then I see the bill.
Yeah, we never did get into that.
Oh, so I'm giving a tour. It's like, oh, I guess we did put a fountain in.
Alright, what's your wishes on the bill?
Move to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. I don't have anything. Oh, at the public input, there was nobody. I told you I didn't have anything. Shannon?
I was just looking ahead to next week. The Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Conference will be in Alexandria November fourteenth and fifteenth, and I know we do have several of our members going. I still have you down, Frank.
Yep.
Okay.
So it's me, you.
Rick.
Mike, you're going, aren't you? No, you're not going?
Yeah, I'm going.
Vic? Ken, are you going?
No.
Okay, so Mike and Ken aren't going.
Not this year.
Alright.
And then we will have a meeting on November eighteenth. And then we'll also have December second and December sixteenth.
Alright, counsel, got anything? Terry? Bill?
Nope.
Chief?
No sir.
John?
No.
Carla? Alright, if not, oh, I should say, how, how did, how did we do? Did we get an A? We have somebody in the audience that's from, from school that's doing a, a report or whatever, so that's why I ask. Alright, we are adjourned at seven oh three.